Good evening. Tonight is January 19th. Thank you all of you for attending this evening. This is the one and only meeting that I get to start, so it's kind of nice to have the gavel for hopefully only a few minutes here. Now, this is our first meeting of the year. As I said, the 19th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We could have all board members are present. Welcome to our new board members. Nick and Greg, welcome. And to Barb also, who's returning. So, welcome to our board. The first thing we'd like to do is call the order and have the approval of the agenda. Can I have a... You've seen the agenda? Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Uh huh.
By Ken Hall, supported by Mark Davis. Questions, comments? Any additions or changes? With that, can I have a... All in favor? Approval agenda? Please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the oath of office for our three board members. I will ask Robin Vanderburg to ask you to recite the oath of office.
Could I have Barb and Nick and Greg stand, please? And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education...
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of Hudsonville Public Schools...
Of Hudsonville Public Schools.
Ottawa and Alleghen Counties, Michigan...
Ottawa and Alleghen Counties, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robin. Our next order of business is the election of Board of Education Officers for the 2023 calendar year. At this time, I will open the floor to accept nominations for the president. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Barb Hooper for president.
I have a nomination for Barb Hooper from Mark Davis. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second from Greg Chansky.
And I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ken Hall as president.
So I have a motion on the floor also to nominate Ken Hall as president from Dawn Sneeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Andrew DeWitt. Do I have any other nominations for president for the Board of Education? Okay, at this time, I will call close to the nominations. The best way to do this is to then go through the board and ask each member who you are nominating for president for the Board of Education. I will start with Nick Bolhaus.
I'll go with Barb Hooper.
Barb Hooper from Nick Bolhaus. Next is... Go to the right. Greg. Chansky?
I'll go with Barb.
Barb Hooper. Next is Mark... Andrew... Mark Davis?
Barb Hooper.
Thank you. Andrew DeWitt?
Mr. Hall.
Barb Hooper? And then Ken Hall?
Mr. Hall.
Dawn Sneeden?
Ken Hall.
So Dawn has four votes, Ken has three, so Barb will be the president for 2023 for Hudsonville Public Schools. At this point, I am thrilled to turn this over to Barb.
All right, next up, we have our Student Council Report. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to do rest of the officers. All right, I now open the floor for nominations for Board Vice President.
Barb, I'd like to nominate Nick Bolhaus for vice president.
Okay, we have a nomination for Nick by Greg and supported by... Supported by Mark Davis. Are there other nominations for Board Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hall.
All right. Okay, we have a nomination for Ken Hall by Andrew and a second by Dawn. Other nominations for Board Vice President? Okay, hearing none, we will close and we will do a roll call. Alphabetical, so we start with Nick Bolhaus.
I will go for myself.
So one for Nick. And then we go to Greg Chansky?
Nick Bolhaus.
Nick. Mark Davis?
I'm Nick Bolhaus.
Nick Bolhaus. Andrew?
Mr. Hall.
Ken Hall. Myself will be Nick. Ken?
Ken Hall.
And Dawn?
Ken Hall.
All right. Nick Bolhaus has received four votes and Ken Hall has received three votes. So Nick Bolhaus will be the vice president for the next calendar year. Next, I will open the floor for nominations for Board Secretary.
I'll nominate Dawn Sneeden.
Okay, nomination for Dawn Sneeden. A second?
I will second that.
Okay, second by Greg. Other nominations for Secretary? Hearing none, we will close the nominations for Secretary. Roll call, Nick?
Dawn.
Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? All right, Dawn Sneeden will be our Board Secretary for this calendar year. I now open the floor for nominations for Board Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Greg Chansky.
Nomination by Mark for Greg.
I'll nominate Andrew DeWitt.
Okay, need a second for Greg? Okay, I'll do a second for Greg. And Ken Hall has nominated Andrew?
Second.
And a second by Dawn. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations and we'll do a roll call. Nick?
Uh, Greg Chansky.
Greg?
Greg Chansky.
Mark?
Uh, Greg Chansky.
Andrew?
Uh, myself.
Barb will be for Greg. Ken?
Andrew.
And Dawn.
Barb, this is a point of clarification. Was there a second for Greg Chansky's appointment?
Yes, I did the second.
Oh, I did not hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Andrew.
Andrew, okay. All right, so Greg Chansky has four votes, Andrew has three votes. Greg Chansky will be our Board Treasurer for this calendar year. All right, I now open the floor for nominations for Board Assistant Secretary/Treasurer.
I would nominate Andrew for that position.
Okay, so Greg Chansky has nominated Andrew DeWitt. We need a second.
I'll support that.
A second by Mark. Other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed sign? Opposed, same sign? All right, Andrew DeWitt, you are Board Assistant Secretary/Treasurer for this calendar year. And that concludes our board nominations. Right, next up, Student Council Report with Briella Beamer.
Hello, my name is Briella Beamer and for those who don't know, I am Student Council's Public Relations Officer. I'm here to report on the things that we are currently doing. So we had a blood drive on Tuesday, which went amazing. Our goal was 84 donors and we ended up having 124. There were 101 successful donations and we had 45 first-time donors. I would also like to take the time to congratulate Lindsay DeHan and Ridley Earhart, both of whom are students at HHS, and also Angela Moe, a community member, all of which reached a milestone of one gallon of blood donated. And as someone who has never donated blood before, I find that really cool. We also had nominations on Tuesday for Student Council's Exec Board, so I look forward to reporting hopefully the results of that next time I see you. Also, Valentine's Day is coming up, which means we are doing this thing called Half a Heart. And for those of you who don't know what it is, everyone at the high school gets half of a paper heart that has a number on it and they're supposed to find their matching half and then they can turn it into good prize. Okay, and then lastly, I know I said a few months ago that we might be having winter dance and then it was a probably, but now it's a definite. We are going to have a winter dance. Our date is February 17th, which is the night of the boys' basketball game against Genesee and our plan is to have a semifinal at the game and then people can go to the dance afterwards, which is happening at the freshman campus. And we will not really be strict on dress code at all. We're welcome for anyone to come, no matter what they're wearing. And yeah, tickets will be sold at the door for that. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
It's not completely accurate that there's no dress code.
Any questions for Briella? All right, good job on the blood drive. The blood is greatly needed.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Teaching and Learning Features. We have two this evening and we will start with Melissa Barnard and Mike Petroy.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mike Petroy. I'm the Safety and Security Director for the district.
And I'm Melissa Barnard. I'm the Student Services Coordinator for the district and we've been asked to come talk to you tonight about our community partnerships and holiday support for our students and families here in Hudsonville.
So what is our goal? As you can see on the screen, what is our goal of our holiday partnerships? It's to ensure that our Hudsonville Public School families are supported during the holiday season by establishing strong partnerships with internal and external stakeholders in our community. You might ask how we go about identifying students or families that may need a little extra support during the holiday season. So our staffs in all of our buildings play a very important role in identifying families. It's really a collective effort from administrative assistants to principals, counselors, social workers, teachers, security. All of our staff really work very hard at building positive relationships with all of our students in our building and our families. So our staff is really key at identifying these families who could just use some extra additional support during the holiday season. So that's kind of how we go about identifying these families.
We recognize too and want to make a note that need isn't always financial. Need can be that we've had some families who have struggled this year. They've lost a loved one, a parent, things of those nature too. So need is not only financial, but it can be emotional support as well. And we really work hard to identify and diversify our giving during the holiday season. So on the next slide, I want to walk you through a couple of numbers. Mike and I are going to tag team this one together. So the first number on here is 48 and we supported 48 different families this year with a partnership with Georgetown Christian Reform Church. Our Student Council and SLIC students here at the high school hosted a food drive here to get items donated for a Thanksgiving meal in addition to food drives at Allward, Walden Street Middle School and South Elementary School. In conjunction with those food drives and with those groups in that support, Georgetown Christian Reform was able to provide a full, complete Thanksgiving meal for 48 different families in our district, which is really incredible. So turkey, all the sides, dessert. It was really great and parents came through on an evening and they picked up their meal and they were able to create that meal for their family during the holiday season, which is really amazing. The 64 stands for our partnership with Chapel Point Church. We support 64 families with their sharing Christmas event. This is the second year that we partner with Chapel Point for this. We were able to support 25 families last year, so we've grown by a ton to support 64 this year. Our families who are identified submit an online wants and needs list and so Chapel Point is really great about recognizing there's some things that we want and then things that we need. Then they have their small groups go out and shop for those families and then they invite the families in on a Saturday in December and they have a professional photographer come in and take family photos for the families, which is really awesome. They get to walk away with a keepsake for that. They have an ornament-making craft station and then they provide refreshments for the families and the families pick up their wrapped gifts that evening as well. And then 94 stands for the number of families that we have supported now in our third year of a partnership with Fit Body Boot Camp and The Big Give. That partnership here locally is sponsored by our Hudsonville branch of the Fit Body Boot Camp run by Will White and we are able to, with their support throughout the year, they raised money in West Michigan. This year, they raised over $250,000 in West Michigan and $25,000 of that was allocated here to Hudsonville Public Schools. They go shopping, their members do at Fit Body Boot Camp, at our local Meyer stores, and they're able to purchase gifts for students. And then we host an evening event, which is a ton of fun, at the Hudsonville Fire Station. Chief Essenberg has opened up his station to us so that the families can drive through and they can pick up their gifts on that evening. Our Meyer here in town donated cookies and hot cocoa for the event, as well as candy canes, and it's just an incredible partnership with our Fit Body Boot Camp. And Mike's going to talk a little bit more on that number about how our varsity girls basketball team is involved too.
So you look at the amount of families or children that we support and 94 is a huge number and with that comes a ton of presents. You would not believe how many vehicles Fit Body Boot Camp. They roll through the fire station with like 10 vehicles just loaded with presents and we had to organize all those and then figure out a way to hand them out. So when we first started this, it was the year of COVID. So Melissa and I are trying to figure out how do we handle all the... Or figure out the logistics to hand out all these presents between a few of us. So at that time, or my daughter plays for the girls' basketball team and she's a senior now, but Casey Glass always feels it's really important to have his players give back to the community. So we thought, what a great opportunity for them to get involved. So we did it at the Administration Building on Van Buren and the girls came and we had all the presents downstairs and they ran up and down the stairs and brought all the presents out to the families that drove in. So we really appreciate Coach Glass's support and his team and they've done it for, what, three years now? So it's awesome to be able to have them support us as well. And then 50. So 50, that signifies our Shop with a Hero event. So the Shop with a Hero event is held at Myers in Hudsonville. They do one in Genesee too, but ours is in Hudsonville. And the Shop with a Hero event, Myers gives out $50, $100 gift cards to students. And so the Sheriff's Department Deputy Smith and Deputy Potma assist me in organizing that. And the students come, they are teamed up with a sheriff's deputy and/or somebody from Hudsonville City Fire Department or Jamestown Fire Department and they go shopping for their families and they're able to buy presents for their brothers or sisters or mom and dad or grandpa and grandma and then they use the $100 gift card to pay for those items. A neat part of the... With the Shop with a Hero is just the positive relationship that families and students can build with our law enforcement community and our fire department. So it's a really cool event. If you ever drive by, you see all the police cars out front and fire trucks and families just have a blast and I think this is our eighth year doing that. So Myers is just a great partnership and they just have a very... They love to give back to our communities and support us. So that's a positive.
And then the 13 up here stands for the number of Eagles Landing sleds. Our Eagles Landing is a school store headed up by Joe Smith, one of our teachers here at the high school. And those students, through various efforts, coin wars, just donations during the year, soliciting businesses, collected over $25,000 that they then turned around and create sleds for our families and they were able to support 13 different families with these really cool sleds. We have some photos in the next slide where you can check it out just through a variety of gifts that way. So that is a student-led, teacher-led initiative here in the building that's been going on for quite some time and Joe Smith heads that up with his Eagle Landing students, which is incredible. So just walking you through a couple of photos. We're not going to spend a ton of time like diving into each one. I'll let Mike talk about this one.
Yeah, so Shop with a Hero, on the right you'll see all the police cars and life ambulance and the fire trucks parked out front. Taylor Rento out of Holland, they donated the outdoor tent that you see, the white one there, and then heaters and that was the wrapping station. So after the families or the students were done shopping, they went outside and people from the fire department wrapped their gifts. And then they even had a Deputy Osmond with his canine riding around in a grocery cart. So the kids love that. Yeah, so that's a few photos of that event.
And I feel like these pictures don't do it justice, but down there on the left are the number of presents. They're in trash bags because we've gotten really smart doing this over the last three years. We've learned some things every single year. In the first year, they came tied together with some string and so the piles of presents, as we're trying to load them into the car, they, needless to say, they're like all falling apart, right? So it was a hot mess. So we have grown, we've learned, Fit Body has learned too. So now we put them in trash bags, which isn't visually appealing necessarily, but it gets the job done. So down there on the bottom left are all the presents with the Fit Body Boot Camp, the store managers at the top. Some of our Ottawa Community Schools Network. We have school community coordinators in Allward, Baldwin and South Schools. They're pictured there too. Our girls' varsity team there in the middle. And then on the far right, just a picture of the gifts together at the fire station as well. Eagles Landing Spirit Store, we got two students from the store in Eagle Gear Finest, the ugly sweatshirt sweater, some of the gear there, sleds on the left and then another basket sled on the right-hand side as well. And then I just wanted to highlight a couple other things here as we close. We have a lot of student-led and teacher-led initiatives that aren't necessarily part of the overall like big holiday giving, but they are, they're doing awesome things for our community and I wanted to highlight a couple of them. So our Student Council here, led by Julie Took and Lauren Wedge, those students raised, or they hosted a movie night here at the high school and they had over 80 gifts donated, toys for Helen DeVos Children's Hospital for students or children that are down there in the hospital right now. And they also raised an additional $200 through that event that they were able to take down on an evening where they do Project Nightlight and they light up all of the windows for the patients at Helen DeVos and they were able to donate the $200 in the gifts to the hospital during the holiday season, which is really incredible. The other group I wanted to highlight is our SLIC group. It's Student Leaders Initiating Change. It's led by Ange Bennett and Becky Dawson and Bob Penning. And that group of students, they do some really great leadership, impactful things with our school community. They hosted a bake sale where they sold their baked goods. They raised over $500 at our holiday concerts and then they turned around and donated that to the National Alliance of Mental Health, the Grand Rapids Chamber, in Luke Ballstad's name. Luke was a former student here at Hudsonville High School who died by suicide this late fall. So it was a great way to give back to his legacy and honor his name for that event. So just want to highlight them as well because we have so many people and I hope the takeaway from tonight is that Mike and I are up here speaking to you, but this is not the two of us. This is a collective effort by so many people. It takes the village and we're just really proud to be the ones to stand up here tonight and share all the good things that are happening. So we really appreciate the time that you've given us to highlight all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Melissa. Are there any questions from the board? From Mike or from Melissa?
Just a comment for...
Thank you.
Just a comment. Great, I mean, great work and it sounds like it's expanded over the years and more, you know, community partners and more students and more. I mean, just to your point, to coordinate all that and tie that together. So we appreciate your reporting, but my gosh, you know, it's part of what makes Hudsonville Hudsonville, so thank you.
Real quick, I know you didn't plan this, but with Shop with a Hero, the minor offender back around 32nd drew even more police to the area.
Correct. That's correct, yes.
Come to Meyer at that point. And I do see Mrs. Took and Mrs. Wedge in the audience. Thank you for the work with our kids on a daily basis and the rest of the staff that does an amazing job every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Very hard on me to start our...
Thank you.
You know, and Mike and Melissa, I want to thank you for highlighting the things that are going on in Hudsonville and I'm glad to see that Wood TV and a couple other folks are here this evening to see the wonderful things that you are doing and just to be able to let people outside of this area know how wonderful this place is. Thank you very much.
All right, our next Teaching and Learning Feature is Amy Ditmer and Amy Taylor. She'll give a presentation on the English Language Department.
Thank you. There we go. Good evening. Let me try that again. Yes, you can hear me? Okay. Good evening. So, English learners bring really a lot of unique strengths, enrich our classrooms and our district's demographic makeup. They also, however, face some linguistic and acculturation challenges. So our English learner program works to meet the needs of our English learners by collaborating with administrators, teachers, support staff to implement high-quality instructional programs along with always our efforts of continually monitoring and adjusting any of that service delivery based on student need. So we will be highlighting this evening really the English learner program and student trends that we see with our English language learners over the last five years. To get us started, I would like to introduce Amy Ditmer. Amy is currently serving as a part-time EL coordinator and an elementary EL teacher. And the collaboration that we've had in her role as part coordinator, part teacher, as well as the other teachers and support staff in the program has really elevated some of the programming and so we wanted to highlight some of that here for you this evening.
If you're not aware, you may be asking, who is an EL student? An EL stands for an English learner and that is any student who is learning English as a second, third, or multilingual student. We identify our English learners by the MDE's guidance. So all students who enroll in Hudsonville fill out a home language survey. If they answer yes to one of the two questions, are languages other than English used in the home or is a student's first language a language other than English, we are required to screen them using the WIDA screener. And based on the Michigan Department of Education's entrance and exit protocol, depending on their score, they then qualify to receive English language services. According to the Office of Civil Rights, we are allowing students meaningful access to not only the core curriculum, but also providing them the basic English language instruction that they need to be successful within our school system. The amount of support that they receive is correlated with their proficiency level. Here's Hudsonville's data over the last five years. We've nearly doubled our number of multilingual learners within Hudsonville. Back in 2018, 19, we had 67 multilingual learners and this year we have 123 currently. The breakdown between grade levels, 71 of those are elementary students, 21 middle school students and then 31 high school students. We also have 44 students who are known as formerly English language learners. According to the state, we must monitor their progress for four years to make sure they're still continuing to receive the support that they need and making adequate gains. Hudsonville has over 26 languages represented within our district and we've also seen an influx of newcomer students in the last... and we've also seen an influx of newcomer students in the last few years. So a newcomer student, also known as an immigrant student, is a student who is between three and twenty-one. They were not born in the United States, and they have not attended United States schools for more than three years. In the 2020-21 school year, there were nine new immigrant students within Hudsonville and twenty within their first three years of American education. This year we have twenty-five new immigrant students, and currently forty-eight of our students are within their first three years of American education. One of the changes we made this year was to look at our intake process for our EL families. Oftentimes, this enrollment process has been difficult due to language. Different countries having different school years. For example, in India, the school year ends in February, and so when a student comes here, they may have completed a grade, but then if they're enrolling in August, that timeframe can be different. Records and immunizations look different in other countries as well. And so we have started meeting with families before they begin school, getting a better understanding of students' educational background, when they last completed school, was there any interrupted schooling, what is their language proficiency, have they ever been taught in English, and those types of information. As the EL coordinator, I've been able to serve a large role in these meetings. And having this role allows our EL staff to continue to support our EL students during this time instead of interrupting services as new students enroll throughout the school year. It also allows our students to begin school with the supports in place that they need to experience success. Families have opportunities to ask questions and have a better understanding of American school culture, which often looks different than what their child is used to. And then we can examine whole family and whole child needs. We recently had a family adopt some students from Uganda, and COVID shut down schools there for two years. And so spending time, making sure that we had all the knowledge we needed to make sure when these students started, they understood how to use drinking fountains, what grade was going to be the best place for them to experience success was something that I was pleased to be a part of. Our program supports look a little different at various grade levels. So in the elementary, we offer a push-in or pull-out support focused on reading, writing, and vocabulary. The amount of time that an elementary student receives support is based on their proficiency level. Our middle schools, each of them offer a sheltered ELA class, which counts as our EL students' ELA credit. And then at Riley, we also offer a newcomer class for those students who are new to the country and the middle school level. And then at the high school, we offer a guided academics course as well as an English language development class.
As I mentioned in the opening, we're always monitoring our programs and determining what is going well and then making modifications as we go. And so as we move into measuring program outcomes, Amy was able to kind of provide an overview of what that programming looks like. But when we look at really how we measure progress, ASHA, really, Every Student Succeeds Act, comes from the Department of Education, US Department of Ed. There's two areas that we need to really be looking at when we're evaluating our program's success. One is we need to be able to ensure that our students are making growth in the area of their English language proficiency, but then also that they're making growth in the student academic achievement area for their content and their grade levels. So those are the two areas that we need to pay attention to. The WEITA Access Test is an annual assessment that's given each spring round. It starts in February, but it happens and usually wraps up right before M-Step. But any student receiving EL services participates in that WEITA assessment. And then we look at that data, which gives us the proficiency of English in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And then that data comes to us in the summer, allows us to make any adjustments to programming services that may need to be made overall for a grade or individual students, but allows us to cater those programs to ensure growth in those two areas based on the US Department of Ed requirement. Last year, we also walked through a Title III program review, and that looks at many, many factors of program delivery and a few pieces that I just wanted to elevate this evening that we have taken action around. One is that based on the data that we reviewed during that program evaluation, we had twenty-eight percent of our students who qualify for EL services classified as what we call long-term EL students, which is not favorable. So basically, what that means is that we had that many students in our program, twenty-eight percent of our students, that were requiring services for five to seven years, depending on the age. So certainly, the younger the student is when they enter our program, we would hope that they would make the progress that we need them to in the area of English proficiency, as well as overall academic progress, so that they would advance out of our program. So we want to limit the number of years that we are providing service to a student so they can make the most academic gains possible. So based on that, that high percentage, we did adjust both our service delivery and the number of minutes for varying levels of EL proficiency. So an example of that would be, prior to this program evaluation, our lowest level of English proficiency, based on the WEITA scores, received two to five hours a week of English language development instruction. And this year, they receive a minimum of five hours a week of English language instruction. Also, middle school students previously were either bused to the high school for EL support or were pulled out of content classes to receive thirty to forty-five minutes of EL support. And now, middle school students are receiving sheltered ELA instruction in a class that is taught by an EL teacher. So those are some of the modifications we made to ensure that that percentage of students qualifying as long-term EL decrease over the years based on our service delivery model. The other factor that we are continuing to track is approximately thirty percent of our students who qualify for EL services are duly identified as receiving special education services as well. And so that has been intentional work this year, where we are working through some state guidance at the ISD level. There's a, we've identified an EL team of administrators and teacher leaders here in the district to take a look at some of the factors and processes that we're using to identify students qualifying for a disability and ensuring that those processes have all of the right players at the table when those decisions are being made to not have overrepresentation of students who are duly qualifying for EL services, as well as special ed services. So that is work that we are doing this year, and rolling out additional information. In fact, we met with the principals today and rolled out some updates and information to all of them. So rolling out some of those processes as we move forward. The additional piece of program review is third through eighth grade students who qualify for EL services score approximately five percentage points below their non-EL peers on an annual ELA and M-Step tasks overall. And so again, that's where we're adjusting those service delivery and the number of minutes for EL students to ensure that they are making the academic gains similar to their peers. Moving forward, again, we'll continue to monitor our program through those priority areas that were identified during our program review last year, as well as other monitoring through our multi-tiered systems of support. Those academic collaborative teams that meet regularly to review student data. They are drilling down to individual student-level data. And so that provides opportunities for ongoing support for all of our students who might not be needing benchmarks. And certainly, that may include ELs if they might fall in that category as well. We'll continue to offer professional development opportunities for all of our teachers. I think that when we look at our trend data and the number of students we had just simply five years ago and the influx of newcomers who are coming to our classrooms with very little English or none at all, that means that as educators, we have to grow our knowledge and skill about how to support these students in our classrooms. So those professional development opportunities will continue. And then finally, we are exploring the potential for a newcomer or multilingual learner program to really centralize support. Due to the number of buildings and the number of increase of students that we have needing service, we need to either continue to add staff, which of course, there's a cost to that, or consider what centralizing services might look like if we brought newcomers together in a multilingual learner program. And so we've been exploring other districts that offer that type of programming and beginning to explore what that might look like and some of the pros and cons of shifting to that service model for our newcomers or that proficiency of student. Do you have any questions this evening for Amy? Just kind of curious with respect to the English language learners. Obviously, they're coming from homes with similar skill levels. How much interaction through this programming have you been able to have with the families of these students?
We definitely work to connect with the families when they enroll, and then we are constantly in communication with them, providing updates on how their child's doing in school, concerns that they may have at home. We send out a monthly newsletter explaining some of the things that are natural to our native English families that they may have not experienced. So winter looks different in other countries and explaining what kind of winter clothing their child might need. Those types of things are all things that are on our radar as well. In addition to providing the translation and interpretation services that they need to be able to communicate their concerns or understand what the teacher is saying during parent-teacher conferences and family events.
Where do we see most students come in? I mean, is the growth in the elementary, or do most come in at the high school level? Where do most of them come in?
The majority of them this year came in at the elementary. We have thirty-six new elementary students out of the seventy-one that we currently are serving. We do get ten exchange students approximately each year at the high school.
So there's a newcomer class at Riley. Is there a need for a newcomer class at any of the other schools? Or do you bus the kids to newcomer class, or not everyone attends, or...?
At the middle school, if they qualify for a newcomer-level class, they are bused to Riley, and their entire day is at Riley, so it's not an interrupted busing for part of, or a portion of the day. They're reassigned to Riley during that time of need. And then once they reach a higher level of English proficiency, they would go back to Baldwin.
Are there any other questions from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move to our recognition of visitors and hearing of people present. Robin will call your name. When your name is called, you'll have three minutes to come up and to address the board. Our first speaker is Gwen Snoyk.
Good evening, and welcome to the new board members. As a former teacher and a resident of Hudsonville for forty-seven years, I'm very aware of the longstanding pride and partnership that's always existed between Hudsonville Public Schools and our community. We have so much to be thankful for, not only today, but for the generations of teachers and administrators and students and parents and board members that have made Hudsonville outstanding for a hundred and sixty-eight years. We're in a time of national controversy in education. There's tremendous pressure for school boards to give up local control and conform to the NEA agenda. The people of Hudsonville prefer to trust you to lead our district. Tackling the controversies that face our district may make you feel contentious, but when there's a flat tire, it does no good to sit around and talk about how great the other three are. True leadership is demanding work. Thank you, all of you, for your willingness to diligently contend for the educational excellence for the children of Hudsonville. Over the past several months, the issue of sexually explicit books in our schools has been discussed repeatedly. And two or three times, the board has resolved to work on establishing guidelines for books, but it has not yet happened. I'm here tonight to request that this task be put on your agenda. There's been an accusation of book banning that aims to make book boundaries seem impossible. But no school and no library contains every printed book. School employees and librarians are always choosing some books and rejecting others. We need you to establish policy that guides our staff in what is acceptable for our students. There's a lot of work being done nationally to assist you in evaluating book content. Please do this work to stop the sexualization of our children, as the vast, vast majority of Hudsonville students are minors. Thank you.
Good evening. Last month, I talked about how malignant actors within HBS can misuse the phrase "support all students." Another phrase that some like to stretch to fit their agenda is the term "student safety." Student safety is not primarily about protecting a student's feelings or their self-perceptions or their pronouns. The primary aspect that you are charged with around student safety is their actual physical safety. To that end, I want to challenge the board and administration in three areas. The first area is around guns in school. I commend the board on the hiring of another security officer last month. This is a step in the right direction. Schools are an attractive target for match shooters because they are largely gun-free zones. But those of us with critical thinking skills all realize that the more guns you can get into the hands of well-trained adults in schools, the safer we can make our kids inside of our school buildings. So while I commend the additional police officer, I would encourage the board and administration to expand their options in how to enlist more well-trained adults to carry guns in school. Michigan State law allows for members of school security staff to carry weapons on school grounds. I propose that much like we often hire our teachers to also moonlight as coaches on our sports teams, we should open school security positions for any well-trained teacher to carry a firearm in and around our campuses. I know some will really bristle at this suggestion, but please remember, I clearly said "well-trained adults." I also referenced critical thinking skills, so please keep that in mind when some are breathlessly flabbergasted around the idea that guns can keep people safe. The second area I would encourage you to evaluate is around preventing child sexual abuse. I recently received some prevention training into conjunction with youth wrestling program, and it certainly made me consider the greater HBS world. We are a large district, and the odds are that right now, we have one or more predators working to gain trust and access to their preferred targets through our own programs, school clubs, or sports teams. We should consistently be evaluating our policies, procedures, and training to equip our admins, teachers, and coaches in safeguarding our students. Maybe they are all very robust, I don't know, but please take time to evaluate them and continually approve our effectiveness in this area. The last area that I want to talk about used to be fairly simple, but it will likely become bizarrely complicated. Please develop a forward-looking, robust, and enforced strategy for keeping people with penises out of our daughters' locker rooms and bathrooms. Teachers and administrators who have no interest in protecting our daughters in this way have no business in our kids' lives, and no business taking tax dollars from my pocket and putting them in theirs. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Johnson. Mark Davis. I have observed over the past year and a half you undermining these teachers, administrators, Dr. Vanderjack, and this board. I have watched your ego take over, and you've forgotten the reasons you became a board member so many years ago. You walk around before and after each meeting, acting like you're holding court with an incredibly inflated view of yourself. You need to stop and take a look at what you're doing and why you're doing it. You need to stop and take a look at what you're doing and why you're doing it. If you don't see anything wrong with undermining and destroying the very people you are supposed to be supporting, then you need to seriously consider stepping down. There is no room for egos or politics when it comes to running a school district and you have lost your way. Barb, in one of your emailed responses to me, you were upset that a teacher had failed to introduce you to their class. You felt it was disrespectful. Have you earned these teachers' respect? Have you had their backs during these difficult times? Or have you followed down the same path as Mark here and forgotten why you're here? These teachers are the heart and soul of our district. They are why it thrives. They are here for our children. They are here to teach, love, and guide. It is what they do, and they do an absolutely fantastic job of it. Our district is seen as one of the top-performing school districts in the state of Michigan. Our students get into colleges all over the country, and they are the reason why. If this board continues down the path they have lately, the number-one reason for the excellence in our district will have no reason to stay. There are a large number of teachers available to retire over the next few years. Keep this behavior up, and they'll be gone, and you will ruin this great district that we live in. The administrators and superintendent also deserve your support and respect. Barb, Mark, Greg, and Nick, I'm not sure who you have in your inner circle, but I have received confidential information from several sources today that you are going to try and remove Dr. Vanderjack from his position. I highly recommend you think long and hard on that. That man is loved and supported by his staff and this community. People with vendettas like Keith over here are far and few between and do not represent the majority of this district. If you do not start paying attention to the employees and the students who are truly what matter here and stop playing politics, the no-confidence vote you are after may just be against this board. There is no room for politics in this environment, and if you can't recognize that and get on board with representing the district the right way, then you should resign immediately. That goes for any and all of you.
Marjorie Hernandez.
Sorry, I had it up here somewhere. Good evening. I wanted to start my comments tonight by expressing my complete support for Doug Vanderjack. Dr. Vanderjack has done a phenomenal job in leading our district. He listens to all invested people in the district and supports all of our students. I have appreciated his demeanor, behavior, and all of the meetings I have attended, both here and separately. With the board gaining two members and maintaining another who are funded by and members of an exceptionally conservative group, it is important to remember that the board serves at the pleasure of its constituents. All its constituents, even the ones who did not vote for you. I caution the board in making too many extreme changes too quickly. Please do not follow in the footsteps of Allendale or our county commissioner board. You are to conduct yourselves according to the Hudsonville Board of Conduct, which you will do later this evening. In that Board of Conduct, it states that you will conduct all board business openly and honestly. All three of you ran on transparency. I expect that promise to be held true now that you are on the board. Another part of the Hudsonville Board of Code of Conduct is to fairly and equally represent all students in the district. We have a variety of needs, races, genders, sexualities, and religions in our district. I beg you to remember this as you make your decisions. Not everyone is white, straight, cis, or Christian. Fairly and equally representing all students is the bar that I and many others in our community will hold you to. Please act accordingly.
Greetings, board. As you all know, it was Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, birthday on Sunday. So I just wanted to bring you a quote, part of my favorite passage from the Letter from a Birmingham Jail. Talks about how there are people that are more devoted to order than to justice, and how the biggest stumbling block towards progress is people who prefer a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice. And I want to encourage all of us in this room, outside this room, throughout the whole community, to remember that we are here to be that force. We are here to promote justice and lift up children and do that in a way where it's not burying our head on hard topics. It's addressing injustice wherever we see it. He also said, "A threat to justice anywhere," or "A threat to justice somewhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I messed that up, apologize. Should have written it down. But that's what we all want. We want you to continue that work. We want to be able to partner with you in that work. So I am encouraging all of us to keep those words in mind. Let's go be lovers and pursuers of that positive peace that meets with justice. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica DeYoung. I live in Hudsonville and have two children who attend school in our district. At the last meeting, I spoke about the importance of repetition in education and how by repeating information in a variety of ways, our students have better retention skills. The same is true for adults. And with that, I'd like to read aloud responses to the emails sent to all board members on January nine, following the Allendale Board of Education meeting and the actions taken by their board. In my original email, I welcomed our new and returning board members and humbly asked that the new board members take some time to get acquainted with how our board runs and to seek advice and counsel from current members leaning into their experience and expertise. Second, I requested from all board members, for the sake of rebuilding trust and transparency between the board and administration, teachers, and the community, that agenda items that they feel are missing be brought up at the meeting and then tabled until the following month. By allowing time for a fully informed discussion with knowledgeable input from all board members and interested community members during public comment, you as a board are nurturing and maintaining the principles of transparency and communication, which are imperative to the success of our district. I was pleased to have received responses from four of our board members, and will read those one. From Andrew, received, thank you for the email. From Dawn, thanks for reaching out with your thoughtful comments. From Barb, thank you for reaching out and sharing your thoughts. I personally cannot recall a time when something was added to the agenda unless it was urgent and at the request of Dr. Vanderjack. I would hope this would not change because creating trust and transparency are critical for the district to move forward. And from Mick, thank you for the note, Jessica. I appreciate the kind words. You make great points. I believe the words that were discussed at length prior to the election were trust, transparency, and collaboration. We need to live by that. I want Hudsonville to be known for those things and for conducting ourselves the right way. I look forward to officially meeting you at some point. Hi, I'm Jessica. I thank you for not adding items to the agenda this evening, and I encourage you to continue moving forward with transparency and integrity as you partake on your work as a board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Becky Blom Dawson. I'm a school counselor at the high school and chair of my department. I've lived or worked in this district all but one year of my life. I've witnessed the changes this community has experienced, to include changes among our youth. Tonight, I'd like to speak briefly regarding the changes and challenges surrounding mental health. On November fifteen, I took a phone call first thing in the morning from a grief-stricken mother whose son, a twenty-one grad, had died by suicide less than twenty-four hours earlier. Eleven fifteen twenty-two quickly became the worst day of my twenty-plus-year career in education. In the weeks before this call, I attended a visitation for another Hudsonville High School grad and former student who also died by suicide. My department also walked alongside another HPS family who lost a mother, sister, aunt to the same tragic circumstances. I can attest that over the past several years, there has been an increase in mental health concerns. The CDC states in 2019, approximately one in six youth reported making a suicide plan in the past year, a forty-four percent increase since 2009. I can deduce that these numbers have continued to rise since COVID because I'm living it. Diagnoses of generalized anxiety disorder, major depression, bipolar disorder, et cetera, is on the rise. Absences due to long-term residential stays, inpatient stays, day treatment therapy is also on the rise, resources that I'm grateful for. And it's not just suicide and mental health diagnoses that are on the rise, but also stress, the day-to-day stress of coping and managing being of youth in 2023. Tier one, two, and three supports all matter. I'm here tonight to ask this board, new members and returning members, to approach the discussions surrounding mental health and social-emotional curriculum in good faith and positive intent. Using data instead of distrust to drive the conversation, using guidance from and expertise of the staff and administrators rather than politicized Facebook groups, using integrity and respect instead of weaponizing SEL and sowing seeds of suspicion. We, you, and I, my team, and colleagues have an immense responsibility to walk alongside our students and families. Please honor that responsibility by building trust and providing support. I am urging you.
Rachel Kane.
Tonight, we heard about a successful blood drive. I think I heard gallons of blood, maybe use those words. We heard about a successful food drive, absolutely totally separate than the blood drive, thankfully. We saw trash bags full of presents and shopping trips with police officers. There was just so much kindness and love being organized and shared by our Hudsonville students. I watched the smiling faces of board members here and the hum of appreciation from the crowd behind me, and even Greg Tansby stopped to make sure that our media saw this as evidence as our Hudsonville character. We aren't hateful here. Look at what our students are doing. But I would like to point out that those wonderful actions are a direct result of social-emotional learning, the social-emotional learning that is so disputed and disparaged by Ottawa Impact and the board members they place here today. Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and relationship competence are all the foundational skills that support the acts of community kindness that we heard about today. The room here seems to value those social skills and kindness, but for some reason, we don't want it taught. It seems to me that the problem isn't the kindness, it's who it's directed towards. Specifically, who is part of our community? Who belongs here? It seems that you think your community should look very white, very heterosexual, very Christian. I worry that you think kindness stops with your mirror. I stand here to remind you that Hudsonville is larger than you and your churches. We need robust SEL education in our schools for that exact reason, so that our students can be well-trained in using their words, not their guns. They can respect identities even when they don't understand those identities, and so that they can see and value cultures different than what they see on Sundays. Being kind to people that look just like you isn't as impressive as you think it is, Greg. It's about how we as a community respect and care for the students who are different that will show our true character. And so far, I am deeply concerned by the values touted by so many on this board and in this room. I'm here to let you know that I have no plans on letting you define the character of this community.
Kathy Beist.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Beist, the parent of two Hudsonville graduates and one current high school student. I want to express my gratitude to all the teachers and administrators in the district for the work they do every day with our students and for our students. Thank you for continuing to shape and mold the lives of our kids. I recognize that your positions are not easy and that sometimes you carry the burden of unfair criticism. Please know that I see you and the positive impact that you have on students in the district, including mine. And to the board, I ask you to take your responsibility to keep all our students safe with the utmost of seriousness. The emotional, spiritual, and physical safety of the students in the district is in your hands. This means that you are willing to call out those who are demeaning students, who have different viewpoints and perspectives than the mainstream. This means that you seriously consider approving both new and revised policies that serve to advance the emotional, spiritual, and physical safety of all students. This means you vote for and champion the safety of all the students in the district. Let's keep all our students safe so that this district can thrive. I encourage you to live into the oath of office and to your commitment to care for the students, every student in our district.
Watching last night's varsity wrestling match against Grand Haven, woo, we won, inspired me to write this. If you've never been to a wrestling match before, I know some have, but if you have never, varsity or any other level, it is something to behold unlike any other sport I've ever been to. The atmosphere is electric, the adrenaline is full throttle. Only one athlete wrestles at a time based on their weight class, and each match is scored by a point system. The score for that athlete then goes to a total for the school team. As each HPS wrestler took to the mat, the bleachers and sidelines screamed and cheered. It didn't matter if they were the best wrestler, like one of our state wrestlers, or just doing their best because they enjoy the score. Everyone was anxious and hopeful that the wrestler would score points for our team. And at that moment, all parents and fans came together, even those of us that don't agree. We all cheered for each other's athletes and each other's children, and we wanted the best outcome as a school. There have been a lot of changes in Ottawa County in the last two weeks. The majority of them, I would say, are based on self-interest. Another school district very close to us has been completely offended in multiple facets of their district based on a PAC that has funded their newly-elected board members. I understand that that PAC did not fund you, but it was associated with the group that did fund you. Please do not let that happen here. As a district, we need to do like our wrestling team did last night and rally behind each student and all of our teachers. As a school board, we need to see you voting in support of all of our students, our economically disadvantaged, our Black and people of color, our LGBTQIA students, our multilingual students, and our students with disabilities. These students are a part of what make our population in Hudsonville so amazing and deserve to be seen and heard and loved like everyone else. You use words like trust, transparency, collaboration. So let's use those words, but into action, and work together as a district to provide an equitable education for all of our students by continuing to support the SEL curriculum that our teachers are currently doing to change our students' lives. Thank you.
Tierney Brechtin.
Good evening. My name is Tierney Brechtin, and I am a fifth grader at our elementary. My family and I have been coming to these board meetings for a while. I, believe it or not, I actually asked to come along. During the December meeting, board members needed to speak about the importance of hearing from the community, including students. When we got home, I asked my mom if there was an age requirement to speak at these meetings. She said, "I don't think so." So here I am. I've been a Hudsonville Eagle my whole life, even before I started kindergarten. I spent a lot of time at her. I tagged along to class parties, helped hang artwork, and helped my mom host comfort meals for the teachers. I knew almost every teacher, and they knew me now as before I was even a student. I've always felt welcome, supported, and cared for here at HPS. Brave, strong, loyal. Those might sound like words to describe a superhero, but I'm here to tell you about my friend. This friend and I have been close since second grade. This summer, my friend came over to hang out. He took time to tell me that after careful thought, they exchanged their name a bit and that their pronouns were now A them. and that their pronouns were now A them. I felt really proud that they felt comfortable sharing this information with me. I promised to do my best with getting their name and pronouns right. And you know what? It's not so very complicated. Sure, I've messed up a few times and apologized, but I trust my friend and want to honor and respect who they are. So why did I share my story about my brave, strong, and loyal friends? Because you can probably tell I care a lot about them and I want you to as well. It's so important that every HBS student, no matter what their abilities are, what they look like, or even what they believe in, be treated with respect, kindness, and love. So I'm challenging the board, including the new people who destroyed, to help HBS do this well. Every single student deserves to feel welcome, supported, and cared for, same way I do. I'd like to end by thanking the teachers and staff. I've had incredible classroom teachers, awesome special teachers, and amazing support staff. You need to know that. At these board meetings, I've heard some pretty hurtful, aggressive, and downright mean comments about our HBS teachers. It's pretty weird to hear that from adults, but I want you to hear from a student that our teachers should rock and they need your support. Thank you.
I kind of wish I had the opportunity to go before. First of all, I'd like to say to the board members, thank you for your continued service. And to the new members, welcome. Like many of the people who did not grow up here, my wife and I moved to Hudsonville in part because of the reputation of the school system and as an excellent place for students to learn and grow. We know that the school system is more than a collection of individuals that are elected to lead it. The students, the parents, teachers, and administrators all contribute to making Hudsonville great. Right now in Ottawa County, we find ourselves on the front line of a culture war that is not new and will not be resolved in this meeting. If we're not careful, the meetings can dissolve into shouted Facebook memes going back and forth without much meaning or understanding. With apologies to Billy Joel, we didn't start this fire and we're not likely to end it either. You're welcome for putting that song in your head. Through the ongoing turmoil, it's important to remember that we all share an important goal: educating students so that they can become productive members of society when they graduate and before. We may differ on the best ways to achieve that or even what a productive member of society looks like, but we still have that goal. While unity is a goal we can shoot for, there are some things that I'm not willing to sacrifice. I believe that all students should be able to see themselves in the curriculum. I believe strongly that teaching social-emotional learning in school is an important way to improve student outcomes. I believe that exposing students to experiences unlike their own will help them adapt in a world that is always changing. I believe that teaching American history cannot be done without first acknowledging the racism that existed at its origins and that America's greatness was created at the expense of people who were here first and on the backs of enslaved laborers who did not have a choice in the matter. I believe that the teachers and administrators that were hired by this board to interact with our children on a daily basis should be allowed to do the work that they were hired for. They are the backbone of this district. Their caring and skills make this district great. To them, I would like to say thank you for continuing to show up each day to first and foremost teach my kids the usual education topics and secondly to help them become well-rounded members of society. What happens in a classroom beyond the traditional lessons of reading, writing, and arithmetic are just as important to the overall well-being of my children. Teachers are there for all of these lessons and I'm grateful for it. I believe that neutral education is not neutral and it will not lead to excellence. Our district will truly be great when all students feel like they belong. Thank you.
We will now move on to our consent agenda. If I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So motion by Ken and support. Support from Andrew. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Right, consent agenda is approved. But now we'll move on to our regular action items, and the first up is our Board of Education Code of Conduct pledge. Robin, do you by chance have it? I don't have it. I don't think we have it in our packet. So annually, every year, the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education has signed the Code of Conduct. Do any board members have any questions on the Code of Conduct? Any need to discuss it, or is everyone comfortable signing? Okay, I'll go through and I'll read it. The Hudsonville Board of Education members are deeply committed and passionate about the quality of education in Hudsonville Public Schools. Serving the students, families, and communities of Hudsonville, the Board of Education recognizes the importance of embracing, adhering, and committing to a method of behavior, operations, and functioning as a board. The following statements will define how each board member will govern. I will fairly and equally represent all students under the core of Hudsonville Public Schools. Recognizing the number one concern is the educational welfare of all students. Two, I will conduct business of the board openly and honestly and avoid any conflict of interest. Three, I understand and recognize that I alone have no legal authority, but rather our authority, which includes actions and decisions as a board, is by majority vote. Four, I will ensure the decisions of the board are supported and enacted even if I do not personally agree nor possibly voted for the ultimate outcome. Five, I understand my role as a board member centers around hiring and evaluating the superintendent of schools and developing school board of education policy. Six, I will conduct my discussions and conversations in a respectful, productive, and cooperative manner. I will listen to, I will listen to, understand other perspectives. Seven, I will prepare for and attend all possible meetings. Eight, I will be committed to the growth and development of my skills as a board member by attending local, state, and national learning sessions when practical. Nine, I will respect and adhere to all legal constraints of Michigan and federal laws. This includes protecting the confidentiality and privacy of students and employees. Ten, I will recognize the integrity and positive contributions of past board members and consider prior work before enacting new policies/regulations. Eleven, I will provide support for the superintendent and employees of the school district and ensure they are able to perform their responsibilities in a professional manner. If concerns arise, I will direct concerns to the superintendent. Twelve, I will promote the development of policies that ensure effective management of the district. Thirteen, I will render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment and avoid undue or prejudicial influence of outside groups. Fourteen, I will refrain from posting personal opinions on board-related topics and issues. I will not post non-publicly available district-wide information without the knowledge of the And again, each member, any questions regarding our Board of Conduct? If not, each member will sign it. Robin, do you have a copy and we'll sign it at the end of the meeting? All right. So if everyone could just stay for a couple minutes at the end. So can I have a motion on the Board of Conduct?
Support.
Right, support, motion from Ken, support from Dawn. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? All right. All right, next up is staff appreciation, and I'll send this over to Dr. Vanderjeck.
Thank you. So the first week of May, we have Staff Appreciation Week, which includes teachers, support staff, all the people that spend their, their day from the minute the kids get on the bus in the morning to when they get off the bus. So that's the first week of May. We ask that the board take a resolution so that we designate May 2nd, which is the first Tuesday of that week, as Staff Appreciation Day. We'll ask the board to spend a little bit of time in the buildings. As we have in the past, we'll assign you a building. And then you'll spend a little time with staff, as well as our administrative staff and central office staff gets a chance to just thank our teachers. We'd like to thank them for 180 school days, which I hope we do, but we want to set that day aside as a special thank you for everything that they do. So that would be our request, that the board approve a resolution for that day of May 2nd.
All right, can I have a motion for the Staff Appreciation Resolution? Motion by Mark, second. Support by Andrew, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Right, motion passes. Next up is Board Policy Update, second reading, and again, this will be Dr. Vanderjeck.
Thank you. So I have a couple things I'd like to bring to your attention. This is the second reading of Board Policies. This is a little bit unique for the new board members, I do apologize. We had first reading in the last calendar year and now the second reading here. So I will ask that if there's a policy you would like to ask a third reading for, that would be certainly advisable, if there's something like clarification. I'll go through them quickly. There's only one point of clarification I would like to make on Policy Number 7217, but I'll start with Policy 0144.1, which is Board Compensation. As I mentioned, in December, you are now on the Hudsonville payroll, well, you will be on the Hudsonville payroll, should you select compensation, which is in the policy. Mrs. Armstrong will walk you through the onboarding process, not tonight, but I know she can, her and her staff can walk through that in the next week or so, so we can take care of that. That would be, that new policy, that is required by state law. As was mentioned earlier, Policy Number 5350 is a student suicide policy. There are no changes to that policy as requested. However, that falls in line with our Blue Envelope Project and the work that we do. I do want to thank Melissa and her staff for really streamlining that policy. It is a very horrific policy to have to have. Unfortunately, we want to make sure we support our students in any way we can. There have been no recommendations to that, that change in that policy either. You have the 6108, which is the authorized electronic funds. That's just basically the change in how the, the state requires the electronic funds. That's the same thing with 6460 with vendor relations as 6700 is with Fair Labor Standards Act. So those three policies and the 6000s fall under our finance office and those policies are required by the changes in the state. Policy 7217, I do want to clarify, that is, that is our weapons policy. The first sentence of that policy, there was a request to change it from the board "may" to the board "prohibits," period. Remove the word "may." That was a recommendation. You can take that as a second reading, bring it to a third, or we can adopt that as a second reading and move it on. I do want to also clarify, that policy is for visitors. We have a separate policy for our staff and support staff. So that falls under the 3000s and the 4000s. This is 7200, which falls under visitors. And I do want to draw your attention to page 11, which is attached, of the attachment, section C, which talks about retired police officers and law enforcement, that it does not pertain to them. It only pertains to them, it does not pertain to them if they are a visitor. It still pertains to them if they are a staff member, because that's a different policy. I just want to clarify that because that question was raised. And then finally, the policy that near and dear to my son's heart is 7440.03, the small unmanned aircraft systems, called drones. So if anybody knows anything about my son and his video work, he's really fired up to approve this policy. If you don't, he'll come to the next public meeting. So, whatever you want, it's your decision. So that are the recommendations for the second reading. And again, if there's a, if there's a point that the board would like to revisit a policy, I'd suggest we bring it back for the third.
All right, so we'll take a motion on the policies that Dr. Vanderjeck just discussed.
So, motion to accept them all.
Motion by Dawn to accept the policies, second.
Support.
Support by Ken Hall, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion passes. Right now, we're going to move on to our discussion items, and the first one is the SOAR V process, and Dr. Vanderjeck.
So I am, I'm going to be honest, there are a lot of people here. I'm struggling to get my computer to get this presentation going, so I'm going to do it right from the board packet. So I apologize. So we are concluding, and I, I will say we are two-thirds of the way through our current strategic plan, which is SOAR IV, and we're moving into beginning the work with SOAR V. Again, this is a process that we traditionally would bring to the board in November or December for the process, but knowing that we had new board members coming on, we waited until tonight. And you can imagine, we have a lot of work tonight, but we have more work at our work session coming up in about a week and a half. So tonight, I want to talk to you about the process that we have followed in the past, and if there is a recommendation, changes, ideas, thoughts, please ask. This is a discussion item. I'm not asking you to vote on this. This is not a, this is not a board decision that needs to happen at any point, but we do ask the board walk alongside us through this process of the strategic plan because ultimately, at the end of the calendar year, traditionally the last meeting in December, the Board of Education will approve the strategic plan, which we would then go into for the next three years. So I'm going to walk you through the process. I'm going to go fairly quick, so I apologize. Stay with me here. So SOAR IV, there's a little bit of history in your, in your packet about how long we've used this. Again, this is the process that was used before I got here, but it's the same process that is used in the district before I came here, so you get an idea of how long we've been doing this. It really started, there are three phases to this process. The first phase is what we call gathering really the focus group or the salient points from our community, from our teachers, from our students, and from our staff members, from different constituents within our, within our community, to say, what are some topics we need to discuss? And it literally is just to get ideas. It's not to say, here's what we want to ask, their opinions, but we move on and we want to get the information from them and say, okay, how can we draft this into a question that we can ask the general population? So we have these focus groups. We have them in January and February. These are probably most likely near the end of February, just because of timing. And we have the community groups, staff groups, student groups. Then report those findings to the boards. That's just phase one, is just having focus groups, about nine focus groups. Each focus group consists of 15 to 25 people from all different walks of life. There are random samples from parents that we select, there are random samples from our Golden Age passes because they submit email addresses. We want to get a broad range of people that we meet with and go from there. Then we go into phase two. Phase two is when we draft a survey. That's when the Board of Education, I will bring to you a recommendation for a survey based on topics that were brought up in this, in the focus groups. And I'll give you, I'm going to give you an example. Let's say in the focus groups, we hear a lot of concerns that our kids don't know how to write cursive. It's real. My kid does not know, he's a senior. Nope, you guys are amazing at high school. He just doesn't know how to sign a letter. So, but that could be a topic. If that's a topic, then that might be a question the board says, you know what, let's ask everybody what they think of cursive. That, it's not going to happen. But if it did, that's an example. So we try to get the topics, then we create a survey. So I'll bring a draft survey, the board will go through the survey and say, you know what, like this question, let's ask more on this question. Or, do we need to ask this question? A lot of the questions we'd like to ask, similar to what we asked three years ago and three years before that. Comparable data is really good to know. One of the questions we always like to ask, do you feel like there is an adult in your school that you can go to if you need something? And it's always nice to compare previous year data to say, are we connecting our kids? And we hear comments about how big our system is, but we also hear comments about how much work our staff does to make it smaller. We want to hear, are we really connecting kids? So some questions will be new, some questions will not exist that were there three years ago, and some will be parallel with their report. So that's phase two. And when we have phase two, we, we create the survey, and the board will probably go through five, six, seven iterations of this survey, but we'd like to get the survey out. six, seven iterations of this survey, but we'd like to get the survey out in the spring, so that we can then collect data. And we'd like to get anywhere between 600 to 1,000 responses from our community, from our teachers, from our students, and get all that together. That's Phase Two. Phase Three, we then get together and we say, okay, let's take the data from the surveys. So we had data from the focus groups that created the surveys, data from the surveys, now let's create some of our goals and objectives that we have as a district. We take that information and we break them up into five groups. We have curriculum, special education, community resources, building site and finance, and co-curriculum. And then we, all of our administrators break up into separate groups. The board then joins this conversation. We say, okay, let's just start throwing ideas out there based on the data from the surveys and how to keep going and create an extra strategic plan. We go through several iterations. The board continues to look at it, what about this, what about this? We do some tweaking. Then we ask that we have a final draft that we bring to the board traditionally in November, and the board will take it as a first reading. Then we ask in December for a final reading, so we have the strategic plan, we have our goals and objectives that we can use as a district as we move forward for the next three years. That's quick. So there's an overview. What questions might you have? And that's a process. The process can be tweaked, it can be adjusted. This is something I've, I think our administrative team, almost all of them have been through this, some of them in several iterations. Some board members have been through it several times. I think the outcome is something we need to really pay close attention to, but the process, I think, gets great feedback from our community, from our staff, from our students, and it helps draft a plan that I believe helps set goals and objectives for the next three years. How are the community focus groups determined? Yeah, it's a great question. So traditionally, what we have done is we take our list of all contacts, which includes, quite frankly, parents, grandparents, could be neighbors, anybody that's in that contact list. It doesn't mean that you, as long as you're in contact with a student, which could be anybody. And then the technology department gives us a random sample, and then we will email usually about 30 people, I'm sorry, about 130 people, and we give them five dates of options they can attend, and we ask them if they're willing to come, and then we have another iteration. So if we get 35 people, we need another 90, we'll do it again, do it again, until we fill the spots and go from there. We also have people that, we use our email address that they submit when they get a Golden Age pass, so that we have people that we can connect that way. And then we also have community education. They have ways to collect, when you have parents that don't have kids in the system, maybe they're playing, three-year-olds are doing wrestling camp. Is that right, Mr. Hamer? Which, by the way, wrestling wasn't tense last night. I didn't agree with that comment, it was awesome. So, I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, so it's not just parents of students.
That is correct.
That is correct.
We do ask that they are people that do actually live in this district, though, and not just ones that are aspiring to move here, or, but they could be school of choice parents, that could be, but besides that, if it's like, you know, I have a friend that lives and they'd really like to, so we try to keep it within our community.
Dr. Vanderjack, in the past, just because of the amount of work that's involved and the quantity of data that's come in, that needs to be summarized and so forth, we've used consultants. Are you still evaluating that, or still kind of thinking that through?
Yeah, we thought, we thought a lot about it. I think, I've reached out to several other districts on what they do. And I think the key for us is, it needs to be our data, our survey, our reflection on the data that comes in, and not somebody else's. So if we have somebody collect and formulate the data, it is still up to us, and I would say us as a board, you as a board, and myself, and us as administrators, to evaluate our data and not ask for somebody else to do that for us. We haven't in the past, but as you said, there are thousands of pages, and correlation of data can take quite a bit of time. And it is somewhat helpful when you can take data from the past and say, okay, let's line it up from three years ago, six years ago, and even nine years ago, and say, how have we, how have we moved? Have we moved? Have we progressed, or have we not? So that is, that's a long answer to a question of, yes, we're still looking at it, but I can't, I'm looking for others that might be able to do the same thing, but I've not been able to do it.
Okay, other questions for Dr. Vanderjack?
I'm not asking for approval, but I read in the room that we can get going, because this is a heavy lift and we'd like to get going. Okay, thank you.
All right, next discussion item is the non-homestead and sinking fund millage renewal. Is this Mr. Pat Briggs or Dr. Vanderjack?
I'm going to kick it off, and then the expert's going to take it over. So, we have, and this is, we, this is a great night for discussion on this. I really, this is earth-shattering, so I encourage you to stay. I am not calling out anyone that just walked out. All I'm saying is, this is, this is, this is important to understand the conversation the board is going to have right now. We have, traditionally in Hudsonville Public Schools, we have had a non-homestead millage that we have levied on non, non-homestead, which is not your home, which means, second, you have a business, you have a second home within our district. We have done that for 27 years, and every year we have gone to the, and I'm going to take these separately. I'd like to start with the non-homestead, because I think that's the heavier lift, and then get to the sinking fund. But the non-homestead is something we've gone to the, our constituents every year for the past 27 years. And the reason why is because of what happens with what we call the headly rollback, the headly limit, and Pat will talk a little bit about that in a second. This past cycle, the voting might have been as close as it's been in years, maybe since it started, but obviously the volume looks different than when it started, so I don't know, I don't have the reason why, but that's a conversation I think the board needs to have about, what does this look like if we continue to do this every year? There's multiple ways to approach this. Number one, we could ask our community to, again, ask for a one-year, I'll call it a renewal of a non-homestead for the 23 calendar year. That again, is for not your home, but it's for businesses and your second home. There have been districts that go and ask their community for additional millage for non-homestead, but you can only still levy 18 mills. And I'm going to try to explain this the best I can. I'm a math guy, but not a finance guy. So, the bottom line, we asked the non-homestead to be 18 mills. That is levied, that hasn't changed for years. We could, for example, ask for a 20-mill non-homestead, but we are only by law allowed to levy 18 mills. So I'm using my hands, if you can see me. So this is 18 mills, this is 20. And we could do that, we could say for five years. And what would happen after one year, the 20-mill might drop down to like 19.6, we still only levy 18. After year two, it drops down to maybe 19.4, we still only levy 18. After year three, it drops down to 18.9, we still only levy 18. That last year, it could drop down to 17.9. At that point, we can only levy 17.9. Does that make sense? So the ceiling's 20, it continues to drop. If it drops below 18, that's the max we can levy. Now, the reason we go every year is because that continues to drop based on our tax base in our community. A lot of it is because of the growing community. Grand Haven is another district where it does this every year. You have other districts that go after a five-year, or a 10-year, or some do a four-year. Everybody's different. The one advantage of going after a five-year non-homestead is it saves the taxpayers about $22,000 a year in the cost of running an election. The downfall, is it 22,000 or 28? 28,000, apologies. 28,000 per year. The downfall of going every five years is you don't really have a true litmus test from your community every year if you want to support it. The other downfall of going every year is, besides the cost, is the time, is the education, is the bringing everybody aware of what that looks like, and the, and the stress level of the first Tuesday after the first Monday of May, right? So there's, there's that. So really the discussion is, number one, does the board advise that we go for a non-homestead millage, period? Number two, should we go after the same, or should we ask our, our community for the same thing we have always done with a one-year non-homestead? Number three, should we do something different? We tonight are not asking the board to make a decision. However, based on the timeline of the language for a ballot, it has to be approved before February 8. And our next board meeting is February 9. So at our work session on January 30th, we are going to ask the board for a resolution based on the conversation tonight, if that makes sense. And we could bring a couple resolutions to the board, if that's what the board would like. And our goal tonight is to have dialogue so that we get a feel for what this board would like us to do, so that we can get things in order for a potential May election. I did provide two pieces of information regarding the non-homestead. One is a flyer that we have used in the past that has been updated for this year. There's also a kind of an FAQ that has been used in the past that has been updated. If we do something different, both of those documents would be altered accordingly. We'll go from there. So, simply with the non-homestead, I don't know, Pat, what pieces have I missed, which is probably a lot.
Nothing, nothing, nothing. You've missed nothing. But Dr. Vanderjack asked me to speak to the reasons why I recommended to him the five-year operating millage vote with the extra two mills. Why it was, he asked me to talk about that, he asked me to talk a little bit about what this weird headly thing is, why we have the headly rollbacks. So, if I could just answer those, Dr. Vanderjack? So, yeah, the reason, the reason I asked, I recommended to him that we do this is so that we, it just, it takes a lot of energy, and it's, there's a cost to it. It just takes a lot of energy every year to run, to run a, to run an election. It puts doubt into our budgeting process. I mean, you don't know, it's a significant part of the budget. If you don't know, you have that every year. And it causes stress. I get complaints from the township treasurers about the rate. I mean, there's just, there's just, there's a lot going on with Hudsonville voting it every year. So I asked him to consider this, and he said, yeah, Pat, let's, let's, let's look at it. So, so what this does, it really just, it gives us that certainty, that budget certainty for five years that we would have our election, or our millage covered. And the reason, the reason why, which is really strange, in other words, really strange things we have to do in Michigan Public Ed, is in 1993, the, with the proposal A passage, it was required that school districts in the state of Michigan had to vote their 18 mills, which is essentially their operating millage. This is the part of the local share of the foundation grant. We have to levy 18 mills, as Dr. Vanderjack said, against businesses' second homes to collect this millage. It's not protected, it's not a protected millage, which means it's subject to headly. Now here is this headly thing. What's that about? Headly is a, it's something the state put in place decades ago to protect against, I would say, runaway property valuations and inflation. Excuse me. So, in it, it reduces our millage rate. That's why every year for several, several decades, Dr. Vanderjack said 27 years, so it's 27 years, the district has elected this year after year, because if we did it for two years and voted 18 mills, the headly limitation would roll that millage back, and we would collect, this year it's 6.83 million, so next year, our millage would be reduced by the factor. So, what do we do? We have smartly voted it every year. And what other, as Dr. Vanderjack talked about what other districts do, is they go and they vote two extra mills, one extra mill, whatever it is, and then, but they can only levy the 18. So they, they have a regular millage vote for 18, they have an extra millage vote for the extra two, and then as the, as your millages are reduced, you can only levy up to 18. So it gives us, it gives us budget stability, it gives us planning stability, it would save us money, it'd make our township partners happier to not have to deal with it, you know, not to deal with it every year. So, they've actually, they've actually brought it to both of us in different situations and asked us to consider this as a district. So, yeah, I think that covers a few of the points. Is there anything else?
A question, Pat. If we did the five-year plan and the community rejected that, what would be the process after that? Would we go back to another election for that year and reevaluate after a year again?
Uh, yes. So, the, we've, we've been talking to our finance attorney about this, and there's a vote, if we ask for five years in May and it was defeated, five and the two, so, because we're going to, my recognition, Dr. Vanderjack, is both for five years, the 18 and the two, we would have a chance to again go for that vote in August. We'd have to hustle, you know, between, between May, but we'd be able to get it on the ballot. And that would, the challenge with that, though, Dawn, is it wouldn't be able to be on summer tax bills. So we'd have to wait until winter tax bill, which we could, we could withstand, but then maybe we go for one, I don't know, you know, what we would do if it was defeated, but it would, it'd be our next opportunity. We could decide we're going to go again for five, you know, or one, whatever, whatever was the board's choice.
Ted, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Explain this in a way that I didn't fully understand it before, but if we go every year, what, are you saying that that gives the local taxpayer a break in what he ends up paying the following year?
The way we're doing it now, it does not.
Okay.
Because we were able to, we, we asked the people for the vote, they voted millage. It's limited for the next year. We only ask for one year, but if we ask for, to extend for two years, it'd get rolled back by the next year. So, because we do it every year, the taxpayer doesn't get that rate limitation break.
Okay.
So it has not happened in 27 years.
My, I mean, it seems to be the most prudent thing to do from a process standpoint and from a cost standpoint. My only concern is one that I raised with the board last May when the millage didn't pass by such a wide margin as it normally does. Usually in the 70s, it was down about five or six points. Is doing something like this going to cause someone to get up in arms and say, hold it, look what they're trying to do to you here, even if they're painting a false scenario?
It's, that's every, I would say every year, we, we have a lift to explain this, because, I mean, words like homestead, non-homestead, headly, all this stuff, it's not, it's not common language. So, so we deal with it every year. Yes, there could be, there could be that doubt, but, I mean, it's, our campaigns, our educational campaigns, we're not, we're not running a vote yes or a vote no, so we really have to paint the entire picture. And when we give the information, we're explaining the impact. We're not, like I say, we have to stay way away from a vote yes campaign. So, we give the answers, and it could cause somebody to be doubtful. Hopefully, they would come and ask us, or, you know, ask anybody, you know, hey, what's really going on here? We do get those questions, and people say, well, what's going on? And we'll, we'll explain it, and they'll vote accordingly.
So you really don't see this as being a driver one way or the other? So you really don't see this as being a driver one way or the other?
A driver to negativity?
Yes.
No, I, I, I see our community being very, um, sharp, fiscally-minded people who will understand. I mean, yeah, they'll be like, "Why, why, why spend money on this all the time? Why make me come out every, you know, every May and do this? It saves them, them effort also." I think it'll, it'll work in our community.
Just have a question for you. If I'm understanding Dr. Vanderjack correctly, the, the risk too we run is by like year four and five, if it drops too low, we might be collecting less than the eighteen. Is there any way to, like, historically look back and see if we had been doing this for the last decade, would we've ever run into that scenario? So we don't hurt ourselves?
Yeah. If we, the, um, we, we looked at this like the last five years, just easy, easy math for, for me anyways, um, we would have been limited by about a mill on the eighteen if we'd have done a five-year with no override. So we.
Just for clarification, with no override?
Yeah.
So if there's a two-mill override, five years ago, if we'd have done this, we'd have got down to about, just around nineteen mills, we still could levy the eighteen.
Yeah.
So we didn't get to below the eighteen. My, my description over the past several years would not have lowered my level.
Just overly cautious.
That's good.
Yes. Actually, I just wanted to be mindful of them. I wouldn't want to hurt us and the law and so on.
That's, that's how we thought about, you know, the one mill would, would have, I mean, actually, we wouldn't have used the whole mill. We wouldn't have lost the whole mill. That's why we said, there are districts that do two, let's do two. I mean, that's why I recommended two versus just doing one.
Other questions for Pat, um, in the next step?
I have questions for some of my panel, um, board members. For those of you that felt that somebody in the community was trying to send a message last time, what do you hope to do to send the message that now this is an okay yes vote? So in other words, um, we all have skin in the game, whether you were on the board last time or you're on the board now. Um, I guess I'd like to hear some ideas from those that thought there was a message sent and how we're going to fix that if in fact we do have a vote for this again.
I guess you're talking to me. So I'm, I'm fairly sharp when it comes to those types of things, Dawn. Um, I, uh, I, I think that, you know, since there, there's basically, for the voter in Hudsonville, it is only a benefit for them to vote for this non-homestead because it doesn't cost us a thing. Yet, when, we normally get seventy-two percent positive votes and it goes down several percentage points, as a board, we need to look at why that is happening and not be surprised if it goes from forty, uh, from, from fifty-nine percent to forty-nine percent the next year. Seventy-two to fifty-nine is nothing. Fifty-nine to forty-nine is everything. Okay? So I asked the question back in May, what are we doing to take a look at that? What are we doing to see if people are trying to tell the board something through this vote? We need to consider all of those things. And, uh, so obviously, since I'm up here, I would be telling people this would be a good thing to vote for. I didn't get involved in it the last time. I just saw the results. And when I saw the data from the results, that's when I asked the question. And I think it's prudent for us to ask the question in January and February than to look back in May or June and July and say, "Why didn't we ask that question?" That's the only thing.
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to have the question asked as, as a separate issue here from this. In terms of the one or the five-year, um, in either case, if the vote failed, uh, we would have the chance to re-vote it in August, whether it's one or five-year.
Right.
So it doesn't make any difference in that regard, so.
Right.
So that's not my only question, but I still would like to have the discussion that Greg talked about here, about why it was so low the last time.
I was gonna make a comment about signs, but I'm not going to. So, so in closing, I, I would.
Wait, wait, wait.
Just wonder if you had any sign budget left.
Well, actually, let me, let me talk a little bit about that. Those are called Papa signs, okay, from the grand, and the grandkids have the signs right now. So I, I don't know, I'll talk to them.
So, though, we'd like to get some direction from the board of what resolution you'd like us to bring to you. I'm getting a, a feeling, or at least not a resistance, that our request of five years is something we can, again, it would be a, a resolution on the January thirtieth meeting that can still have discussion, however we get to a tight timeframe if it's not approved. And I'm not saying you have to say, "Let's do this or not." We've had a lot of conversations. We did want truly this board of seven to make this decision. So if there are questions, concerns, please soon let us know so that we can get it to you, any information that you need, questions you might have, because as Dawn alluded to and Greg addressed, that this is not a, um, this is not an administrative cell only, this is a Board of Education and community cell. Uh, our kids are extremely important and, and this opportunity, quite frankly, for a non-homestead of nearly seven million dollars in an operational budget, does not affect our structures that are going on, it doesn't, it, but it does affect the amazing staff that we have in this district. And our kids are, are too important to not give us, give all of our effort to supporting their education.
So, Dr. Vanderjack, what do you need from us today? I mean, you said you're now asking for a vote, what do you need?
I need, I need a kind of a, I feel, I, I feel as though that the sense is, a recommendation of five years is something the board would consider on January thirtieth. And if that is different, I would ask that you speak now so that we bring you something different, whether it's one year, two years, ten years, um, or not at all.
I, I certainly support the recommendation of, um, five years. I know we've, I know, I've looked at the data, um, very closely. I know we had a drop. We've had a drop of that percentage amount in the past. Um, some people recognize that, some don't. But, um, the savings to the taxpayer, the, um, the, um, amount of time, um, that our administrative team and our, our superintendent and finance assistant superintendent have to put into this, I think a five-year approach is prudent from the standpoint of saving the money district and, uh, saving district money and from, um, how, um, how our, our administrative staff is, um, managing it, where they spend their time. Um, I think there probably were a number of factors that went into, to the last election. Obviously, I have to recognize that the percentage of the vote is, is very, very small as well. My experience on this board is this community has always been extremely supportive of the education of our students and of, um, financing our schools and understands that we want to be, continue to strive toward academic excellence. And, um, and what we do, we're, we're, we're a tight ship. We run this school in a tight manner. And when we ask for money, it goes to good use. And, um, I think a, a five-year plan is a prudent plan, um, and, um, again, to save the district money and to, to save time and to keep us focused on what we're really trying to do, which is educate kids toward academic excellence. So that's, I support the premise.
So, Dr. Vanderjack, do you have your direction? Any other comments?
So, I know we weren't supposed to add anything to the agenda, okay? And we're not going to, but would it be prudent for us to, to take a vote on this?
No.
Okay.
Sorry. I needed that right.
Okay.
We, we, for two reasons. Number one, uh, because of the agenda. Number two, because the resolution needs to be drafted for the date that we're gonna ask for the board to approve it.
Okay.
So the special resolution will have the date on it. It's a roll call vote. It's a special document that the board does approve and will have another document if I can go into the second phase. So now, now, is that, is that okay?
Yes, okay.
Um, the next thing is the, uh, what we call the sinking fund. Um, and this is, it's a, it's a perfect name, but it's what it's called. Um, so it's a sinking fund that the, uh, the district has supported every five years for the past couple cycles, I think since ninety-seven, maybe?
Over here.
Is that right?
Ninety-seven was the year.
Yes.
Took effect in ninety-eight. Ninety-seven, no, took effect in ninety-eight. Every five years, it is a five-year cycle. We're back at this now. For all of you that stayed, this does affect you, um, unless you had a business and then the last one affected you. Uh, so this is a sinking fund. This is a sinking fund that does not add, um, debt to the district, but it does give the district the opportunity to take care of, um, repairs that take place, whether it's roofs, boilers, parking lots, technology, um, you know, we are now a one-to-one district with our students. This allows us to replenish technology for our kids. This is a five-year sinking fund that we asked for five years ago. Nothing has changed other than the timing. I did create a document, I did provide the board. There are some highlighted sections that we're still trying to, to finalize and get done. Um, this is another component that we would ask the board to take a resolution on January thirtieth, um, to approve the request to ask our voters to renew the five-year sinking fund that we had in place. So the last one was for those to continue the eighteen mills, for those with a non-homestead, which would be businesses or a second home. This one is ask our community to maintain the millage rate that we had for our sinking fund moving forward for the next, another five-year request. So there's additional information about the sinking fund. The one, I'm gonna give you the pluses and minuses. The, the downfall is we're asking our voters for two heavy lifts at the same time. The advantage is, we're only gonna ask once every five years. Um, so you get four years of, "Okay, I don't have to keep going." And it saves money for the district. It saves, over the course of that time, close to a hundred thousand dollars to not have to go through and do this all the time. Um, that's the downfall. Um, again, the advantage is having it for the next five years. To Pat's point, building the stability, um, we do have more square footage in our district, we have more facilities in our district, and several of our buildings were not addressed in the, um, current bond work, which means we could have, we had a boiler go out, um, boilers in a building are not like your hot water heater at home. It's an expense to get a new boiler in a building. So those are things that the, that the sinking fund can address. Again, it does not debt levy it on the district and the, for the sake of the order, it gives you an idea in that documentation what the sinking fund is. The other advantage of doing it now is it does allow the Board of Education, as well as at least Pat and I and central office staff, to, when we do educate our community, to talk about both. And, and when you do have meetings with, with parents, whether the focus groups that I talked about with strategic planning, those conversations can come up. So it's truly an educational opportunity to get into the community, get in the public and talk about these things, to educate. How people vote is one hundred percent up to them, but I want to make sure we educate as many as possible on what we're asking. So this is a, it's a different quest because nothing's changing in this one, as, as our recommendation to the board. Again, not a vote tonight, but a conversation so that we know what resolution to bring to the board on January thirtieth.
So you're comfortable taking them both and, and speaking to them both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But I just wanted to make sure I knew your.
I do, I do believe our, our, we have a very, um, engaged, intelligent community that wants to know, um, what's taking place. And I think we can have those conversations. And, and it's a great dialogue to have. There's several other things that might come up in the conversation, but this might start that conversation to really get a feel for me. And, and when we'll know. And, and it's the same thing as Pat had mentioned. If there's anything that's not successful, we do have other opportunities. You talked about August, we could restructure it. We actually can go back in November, there's a little bit of a crunch with timing on that. Um, but there are other opportunities, but I'm optimistic that our, our community really, there's a passion for our kids out there. And it starts with this group. And I know our community is, totally believes in the education of our kids.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of feel that timing is right for it because everybody's engaged right now and there's going to be a lot of dialogue going forward. So, um, this is something that I look at that can kind of bring everybody together, which would be great, um, because it benefits the students and the staff and so it makes all the sense in the world to go after both of them, at least.
Yeah, the sinking fund is a great program. We've had it, I don't know if other districts do this or not, but we've had it as long as I've been on the school board. It provides us a great deal of flexibility, particularly, we've used it when we've had properties that have become available, we need to buy, so we have the assets there that we'd have to go into debt for them. So I'm really strongly in favor of this sinking fund.
Yeah, I agree.
Pat, could you tell us where we're at right now in that sinking fund and if for some reason we had a slight delay in the collection, um, looking at some of the projects? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I didn't see it in the financial report specifically.
So, we are at, um, this is in December, we're rated five million dollars.
Right, and not hearing any, other than bringing back to us in January, so we will have a resolution prepared for the board. For those that are really excited to come to a work session, it is, uh, at the, the campus. It's the, we call it the freshman campus still, it's only for a matter of time, but I'll address that in a minute. But it's in the media center, um, the board will take, those are, they're, they're most, they're all discussion items. Uh, you can see the agenda online, but you will see two, um, resolutions, which is not normal for a work session, but because of the timing, we're, we are asking the board to take this as a resolution at that point. That's it. Thanks, Pat.
It depends, it depends on how you dress. It might be three, might be three, three questions?
Oh, three, it could be three resolutions.
It could be.
It could be, a non-homestead, a two-mill headly override, and then a sinking fund.
We just haven't seen it yet.
So, you, you will see it ahead of time. Go ahead, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Vanderjack, and thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, we are next up to our superintendent report.
I have about a forty-five-minute presentation, so if you want to stick out now. And do not tell me to score the basketball, being drunk. So, um, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, two, I'd like to, three quick items. I, I do appreciate the board's understanding that, uh, we are working on the Bluetooth mics that you should have in front of you. This is the temporary. Keith might not have stayed, but Keith, thank you for doing this. So we have mics now, but you were waiting on the receiver that was ordered in March. Um, that should come in. Uh, we were told the end of, it was the end of October, but now it's the end of February. So we're anticipating the receiver and then you'll, it'll be, at least communication will be easier than the mics that you have in front of you. So I apologize for that. I was encouraged that we ordered, um, radios for the early childhood center, uh, back in February, and those came in today, this morning, right? So at least there's a light at the other's tunnel, but that's our limit. Um, I, I, I want to talk a little bit real quick that, uh, this is exciting because it's January, but we have technically started the second semester of, of our, at our second, at our middle schools. Uh, their second semester started. Next week is the last full week of January. Um, Melanie McClure is here, I think somewhere, um, dear, there she is. Fast and Furious, the scheduling has begun for the five-six building for students. Uh, the scheduling process will begin for the rest of the students, um, except our seniors that will not be scheduling, um, for next year, well, hopefully for college, but not next year. So, uh, so that process is going quickly. Uh, we will be bringing a lot of work to the board. Uh, some requests for curriculum for next fall, we've waited till now. You'll see a lot of the work session, they'll ask for approval. Uh, we still have to collect data that has been requested by the former board for the ruler program, so that will not come to the board in the immediate future, uh, but we're getting the information that the board has requested and we'll work on getting it from the board to, to see before a decision's made. And then, and we'd like to thank the work, um, that all of our administrators, all of our staff. Uh, you are here tonight because you care about your kids and, um, uh, you have kids at home that you're probably missing, but you're here in your support. And the time that you spent with our kids is, I can't even thank you enough. I couldn't think of a better place to be, and thank you. And, and last but not least, uh, the high school offices that were there are no longer there, they're now in the connector, going from there. So if you do come and you try to stop in the office, you're in the wrong place if you stop in this door. Um, thanks to Mr. Beal and his staff, custodial staff, the counseling staff, everybody moved down there and it's been awesome. So it's exciting for, for everyone. So that's my report tonight.
All right, any questions for Dr. Vanderjack? After hearing none, we will do a board roundtable and we will start with Mr. Frank Chansky.
Thank you, Barb. Just want to make a couple of comments. I'm very, um, enthused about the number of people who showed up today. The, um, counselor who gave the presentation on mental health, I think that's something that's very important as an elder of a, of a church. Over the last couple of years, I've dealt with issues that I never, ever thought that I would hear about. And there are a lot of people in this community that are hurting. And I'm, I'm very happy that we have a place here in Hudsonville Public Schools where you can be part of the solution and help people when they're hurting in ways that they don't know how to get. that they don't know how to get from point A to point B. And I'm thankful for all of the other places within this community where people can find help also. This is a very caring community. Um, Jessica made mention of an email that she sent to the board on January ninth in response to something that had happened at another board meeting in the county, a couple of board meetings. And we were very cognizant of that. In fact, on January sixth, I met with Dr. Vanderjack. He had invited me to come to his office. And one of the things that I told him, and I had spoken to a couple of people on the board, "We will never make a travesty of the process. We will never do anything that's gonna cause, uh, this board to look unprofessional in anything that they do. We're gonna be orderly, we're gonna be process-driven, and we have some differences in what we think on, on certain subjects. And we will be talking about those, but we will be talking about them in a professional manner, showing respect to the people that we talked with." And I personally told him that if I ever treated him in a way that he felt was disrespectful, that I wanted him to pick up the phone and give me a call and let me know that. And, uh, the process will not become the problem. So for those people who are looking for some fireworks or something tonight, I'm sorry.
Ken, you're a class act. I am so, was so impressed with you. We've had many conversations. You're level-headed. You have seen this district through some really, really difficult years. And I know your family sacrificed. Um, I don't think anybody really appreciates the amount of time and effort you've put into this. And I truly have learned so much from you. Um, I'm glad you're still gonna be sitting here, um, but I think you need to be, um, appreciated for all the time that you've given as president.
I, I feel obligated to say something, but, um, no, I, I would echo that. You've, you've, you've served this community well for a long time and I'm honored to, to be able to, to sit next to you and learn from you, um, for however long that you're gonna keep going. Because I can't imagine, uh, being on here as long as you have. Um, you know, I'm, I'm excited, I'm, I'm humbled by, um, by this, uh, task that we have at hand, this, this, uh, this duty that we have. So, yeah, I'm appreciative of, of the time that you all set aside to come out tonight and I hope that this continues, um, because I think the more that everybody's engaged, the, the better our community becomes, uh, the diversity of opinions and thoughts. We need to have those conversations. Um, so it's, it's humbling to be up here tonight and I'm, I'm really encouraged by, you know, the conversations that took place tonight, so appreciate y'all coming out.
Well, I very much appreciate the kind words and kind sentiments and kind thoughts. Thank you for that and I'm, and I'm truly humbled by it. I just, I look forward to working with the new leadership. Change is good. Change is healthy. It's okay. We're all here, we're all part of a team on this board and we will continue to strive toward, um, academic excellence, um, within our, for all students. We want all students to achieve, um, what they can achieve and do the best that they can do. And I know as a team on this board that will continue to do that. And, um, and I, I certainly offer my support, my, um, help to all the new, um, board members and, um, executive leadership here. Feel free to reach out at any time and I mean that genuinely. And, um, again, we move forward and I look forward to a great year. I truly do.
Andrew?
I mean, I think we've had, there, there was a little bit of differences in opinion here today in terms of who's gonna take what leadership role. But I just, I want everybody to know Barb and, and Nick and, I mean, I think you have a lot to offer to this community. I'm looking forward to working with you and I think that as long as we continue to keep our students' best interests in mind and, and strive to, to be the best school that we can be and be the best board that we can be, we'll be in a good place. And I respect all of you. I'm really looking forward to serving with all of you as well.
Welcome to our new board members. It's a pleasure to have you here. It's good to be with this group and look forward to a good year.
And I just want to personally say thank you to Ken. I, for the last year, I've been vice president, so I've had the opportunity to work with Ken closely and I have the utmost respect for Ken and I've learned a lot. And, um, don't worry, I'll be in touch. I also really appreciate all the people that are here tonight and I hope you come back 'cause, uh, we will be very transparent. There will be no added agenda items unless Dr. Vanderjack brings something forward, as he occasionally does 'cause it's emergent. So please come back and look forward to it. All right. With that being said, I will take a motion for adjournment. A motion by Mark, support by Andrew. All in favor say yes?
Yes, yes.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.